Did you hear all? I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Ms. Byron, is it your call?
It's Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Quinter. Madam Chair, the... Here she goes right now.
Here.
Madam Chair, the board certifies the presence of the board. Thank you very much. Can we all stand for those present in the room?
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, there are no changes to the agenda. I would entertain a motion to accept it, tend as presented, please.
Madam Chairman, I recommend to approve the agenda as recommended.
Thank you, can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Um, down to the consent agenda, to the min- um, the minutes and finance reports. Um, let's see, October 3rd, and let's see, financial report, the monthly nutrition report, um, can I have a motion to accept these, please?
I have a motion, Madam Chair, that we accept the minutes from the October 3rd meeting and the October 20, '22, uh, on April 4th, policies for nutrition, monthly report.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Um, and monthly operating bills?
Do you have a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion that we accept the monthly operating bills in the sum of $5,215,579 in the essence.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And right now, we're going down to staff members recognition. Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It brings me great pleasure this evening to continue our tradition here of recognizing excellence and very proud that we will be able to present both staff and students to you. And so our order tonight, we will start with Mr. Dick Sedano, Principal at Gordon Barber. He will be followed by Ms. Blair, who heads up and takes care of food services, followed by Ms. Rupp, Principal at Lightfoot, and then Mr. Finger, Principal at Locust Grove Primary, and then Mr. Paul Mary will have the students, will address them as soon as we're done with staff members. So, Mr. Sedano, please come forward.
Thank you, should I, uh, have my recog- uh, folks on recognizing come up right now as well?
Yeah, and then what we're gonna do is, as you're speaking about them, and then join us over, we're gonna do certificates, and we're gonna have everybody back.
Uh, so, uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Mike Allers, Ms. Melissa Erby, and Ms. Christine Shipp, please join me. First of all, I want to say thank you, Dr. Hornick, thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, and the, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for having us here tonight, and, uh, thank you for bringing in these recognitions. It's great to take an opportunity to celebrate all the good things that are happening within our schools, uh, when sometimes it feels like we're getting hit left and right with all the negativity out there. So, uh, thank you guys for, for giving us this opportunity. I want to take, uh, tonight, I want to take an opportunity to recognize our fourth grade team from Gordon Barber Elementary School. And our fourth grade team is a team of, uh, much experience, they are a, uh, exceptional team, extremely hardworking, uh, and these te- these teachers know how to get the job done, Orange County's kids. Uh, over multiple years, they have demonstrated the ability to transcend challenges to ensure that all students are learning and all students are making mastery. In this past year, one that was characterized by vast disruptions to our educational system. We went through days where, uh, a year where we had forty percent of our days in person. Uh, the next year, it was characterized by, uh, students having to miss days due to sickness for vast amounts of time. Uh, in spite of all of that, I want to recognize them for their results and achievement, for all students in reading and math, and then all subgroups as well. So I'm gonna throw some numbers at you. Uh, over this past, during this past school year ending, uh, in May of 2022, in reading, our fourth grade team saw ninety-three percent of students, uh, pass the test on growth or raw scores, so ninety-three percent of students in reading. Uh, with students that are economically disadvantaged, ninety-three percent passed. Students with disabilities, seventy-eight percent passed. Students with limi- limited English proficiency, one hundred percent passed. African-American students, one hundred percent passed. Hispanic students, one hundred percent passed. Congratulations. And math, last year, all students, pass rate, when we're including growth and raw scores, ninety-seven percent of students passed in math. Uh, economically disadvantaged students, ninety-seven percent, students with disabilities, one hundred percent, students with limited English proficiency, one hundred percent, African-American students, one hundred percent, Hispanic students, one hundred percent. Great job. And this just wasn't last year, this wasn't just a fluke. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, these same teachers, uh, gave the reading and math test. In reading that year, it was ninety-four percent, and math that year, it was ninety-nine percent. And we're talking, uh, including passing, and with those high numbers, we're talking ninety-nine, you're gonna have most of your subgroups passing. So fantastic job, fourth grade. You mentioned the third grade last year, fourth grade the year that prior to those numbers, and third grade last year hit ninety-four percent. So, it's fantastic. So keep it up, guys, thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize them.
And we're gonna do an individual one with Nick and myself, and the teacher that will give the board. So we're gonna do individual one. Okay. And then we're gonna put all of them together.
A grin, a grin.
Sorry.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We sent them a big real. Congratulations. Congratulations. Booster beer. Congratulations. And we're gonna give all, give us all one time, and then we'll have one fruit shot together. How's that sound?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hornick. It is my pleasure and my honor to recognize Marsha Jacobs for her excellent service as administrative assistant for school nutrition and so much more. Uh, Marsha is a master of organization and communication. She is also the most creative cheerleader I have ever met for our team, and I appreciate her so much. I have to say that the labor shortages around the nation, of course, have affected us as well in school nutrition. Marsha Jacobs, one of, one of her many, many, many responsibilities is to provide the, uh, manage the schedule for the substitute cafeteria workers for all of the schools and all of the cafeterias every morning. And she does this before nine o'clock every morning, sometimes before seven. Um, there was a time, in fact, when everybody was sick, I, I don't know, I think everybody just got sick at the same time, and all of our staff was calling in, and they were calling in on Saturdays saying, hey, I'm not gonna be there. Two cafeterias actually didn't have any staff at all that day. So on Sunday, on her day off, Marsha jumped into action, just like that, without hesitation. She's calling subs, not that we have a long list of subs, maybe just a handful, but she's managing subs on Sunday to make sure that Monday morning, the kids won't even notice. They're gonna have their breakfast, they're gonna have their lunch flawlessly. This is what Marsha does without hesitation. And then, when there weren't enough, she still reached out to other departments for help and put her kitchen work shoes on and went in the kitchen and worked, which is well above and beyond the call of duty for an administrative assistant. Marsha keeps kitchen work shoes in a bag next to her file cabinet in case there's an emergency, so that she can jump in and help. And that's how dedicated she is. I could talk all night about how great Marsha is, and I just, but all I really want to say is that I am grateful that she's part of my team, and she is a blessing to all of us.
Awesome preschool teacher back in her day, too.
Good evening. I had to compare something where I would go on for a very long time, of, um, Ms. Shiflett, but I'm merely grabbing the principal at Lightfoot, Ms. Jakubik, um, Ms. Amy Jakubik, she cannot be here this evening, but this comes from, from both of us in recognizing Wendy, Wendy Shiflett. So Ms. Shiflett is the TTRT at Unionville, Lightfoot. Those of you who know her know that she went to school at Lightfoot and became a teacher at Unionville before becoming an instructional coach, and then an ITRT, and then a TTRT. She's a true Orange County born and raised educator and what we pride ourselves on in Orange County. Ms. Shiflett is a natural leader and go-gather, and she has to be, as she wears many hats, serving the students, the parents, and the staff in both schools. First, Ms. Shiflett is a teacher. She teaches teachers how to use the most up-to-date technologies such as drones, she makes lesson plans for our tech IA to teach students directly how to use technologies such as Code Monkey and Ozabots. Next, she is a coach. She leads professional learning for staff on technologies such as Perdeck and BrainInCamp. She walks hand-in-hand with teachers to implement that technology, and this is all in, like, one day. She is also the testing coordinator for our schools and making sure that the S O L items are prepped, staff are trained, and testing runs smoothly. Ms. Shiflett also helps the administrators in both schools, and the teachers organize and dive into the data that enhances our students' learning. She also trains our families on Canvas and proper use of the Internet. She also makes sure that students' devices and programs are working, and I hope that everybody hears the many also's, because Ms. Jakubik and I see it every day, every moment. Ms. Shiflett wears all these hats plus more, always with a positive attitude and growth mindset. Ms. Shiflett is Orange County.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, Dr. Hornick. It is a pleasure to recognize our LGPS cafeteria, um, team. They are a vital and important part of our overall Locust Grove Primary School team. Team includes Gordon Scott and Grant Tigman, under the management of Ms. Geraldine Linkley. The team works very well together, and they strive to provide a healthy and nutritious breakfast and lunch, uh, each day for roughly about four hundred and fifty students and staff. The character and work ethic of the team speaks to the cafeteria's, uh, the team's belief and understanding of the important role they play in the learning and development of our Cardinal students. They bring joy to others, not only because they feed others, but because they perform their roles with joy and a smile, and that is something that really stands out to me when I see this team works together. As those students walk through the line, you can see them smile, what would you like today, um, and they really are patient and helping them select a choice that, that will be good for them and is healthy.
Right?
They are always enthusiastic, each and every day, excited about the role that they play in the education of our students. During the month of September, the LGPS cafeteria staff served five thousand fifty-seven total lunch meals and six thousand five hundred seventy-six total breakfast meals. On average, the LGPS cafeteria staff serves two hundred and fifty-three lunches per day and three hundred twenty-nine breakfast meals per day. I am really grateful for the opportunity to recognize the Locust Grove Primary School cafeteria staff and extremely proud to call them the staff members of our school and the greater OCPS team. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, members of the board. Frank Paul Mary, Principal of Orange County High School, thank you for this opportunity to recognize, we're gonna go a little bit of a different direction tonight, and ask members of our top ten in the class of two thousand twenty-three to join us tonight to be recognized in front of everybody, as I feel this is a group who has done exceptional work over their first six semesters of high school and who have been unapologetic in their pursuit of excellence regardless of the circumstance. Over these last three years, while going through high school during an unusual time, this is a group of incredibly talented young individuals who has rigorous coursework that they've signed up for, do not share an ounce of competitiveness towards one another, you will never find a more well-adjusted, better getting along together type of a group, but these are some of the great kids that we have at our high school, who I've had the pleasure of getting to know early on in my ten years of principal of the high school, and getting to work with them on a daily basis is what truly makes things in places like Orange County High School a great place to be. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce everybody, I'm gonna call them up one at a time, and then we'll go through. Our tenth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-three is Ms. Madeline Carter. Our ninth-ranked student is Ms. Diana Gonzalez. Our eighth-ranked student is Ms. Charlotte Samuels. Our seventh-ranked student is Ms. Mariah Ajabou. Our sixth-ranked student is Mr. Jonah Laker. Currently, the next two students are both tied for fourth with rank in the class, and first is gonna be Ms. Olivia Shabrazzi. Sharing that co-rank right now with number four is Ms. Yansey Waker. Our third-ranked student could not be here with us tonight due to a prior commitment, and that's Ms. Abby Murray. Our second-ranked student is Mr. Scott Clor. And ranked number one in our class of two thousand twenty-three after six semesters is Mr. Solo Metetwa. And if I could just make one additional comment about Solo, he will become the first-ever black male valedictorian in Orange County history, something that is an incredible accomplishment. This kid works incredibly hard.
All right, we're gonna do individual shots, you being the student first, and never anybody else. So, so, if you wanna give, so, show, bring it, pull, two, three, one, two, we'll go here, congratulations. Anyone else wants to come get an individual picture, come up and get them up close. I'll make sure, did you get it?
Yeah, I got it.
You sure? Okay. Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations. Congratulations. You're still welcome. Congratulations. Oh, thank you, congratulations. Congratulations. Well, if you didn't know walking in tonight, you certainly know now, the future is incredibly bright, please join me here. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate your time.
And at this time, um, I've been asked to entertain a five-minute recess before we resume this meeting, so at this time, we will pause for five minutes recess. Get out to you all, I'd like to reconvene this meeting, please. And at this time, I will officially open public comment. Ms. Byron, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have six speakers, right? But first is Gary McFadden.
That's enough, I have to follow those wonderful recordings. Dr. Hornick and School Board members, after the October 3rd School Board meeting, I went back and reviewed the proverbial game tape of that meeting, which was thoughtfully provided on the OCPS School Board website. During the course of my review, a number of unanswered questions arose, which I hope the board members will seasonably address either in the near future or later this evening. Here are my questions and concerns. Around the two-hour thirty-seven time mark, Ms. Quinter asked the other board members what it was that they could not support in her resolution. Why would none of you respond to her simple question? Ms. Page completely evaded the question and employed what is known in negotiation tactics as a cross-road strategy to introduce a brand-new topic to divert discussion. Jim Hopkins used the same tactic, stating his preference for the General Assembly past guidance on sexually explicit material with no explanation as to why. Mr. Jones demurred and resorted to personal anecdotes, even initially abstaining from offering a response. As chair, Ms. Page ineffectively foreclosed further response to Chelsea's question by stating that the board should follow the policies which Dr. Hornick tailored from the model V E O P policies. In a last attempt, Ms. Quinter expressed concern that the three policies under consideration did not encompass all the items included in her resolution. When no one would respond to her concerns and questions, Ms. Quinter finally called the question, and the vote was held, which resulted in the defeat of her resolution. The next day, I authored a respectful email to Ms. Page copying Ms. Byron, asking if working drafts two alpha, two alpha dash Romeo, two alpha Bravo dealt only with instructional material and supplementary materials, and two, if she and the members of the OCPS School Board would accept and agree to adopt all other portions of the 2022 model policies. Ms. Page never responded to these very two simple yes-or-no questions. After defeat of the resolution, Dr. Hornick stated that the three proposed drafts were based on the model guidance on instructional and supplemental materials. He asked if there were any questions. My questions, which are respectfully tender, is how could there be? No one in the audience was familiar with the board's sudden pivot to a completely new topic of consideration. My hope is that when I send another email tomorrow reiterating my concerns to the board members, they will give me the courtesy of a response. Many like me believe that all elected officials have an affirmative duty to engage in meaningful two-way communications with their constituents and indeed show comity with their colleagues. In a representative democracy, voters elect officials that agree to be held accountable to the will of their constituent majorities. I implore the board to hearken to this fundamental principle, thank you.
Jennifer Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Jen Schmidt, and I am one of three speech-language pathologists for the county. From here on out, when I say SLP, I am referring to a speech-language pathologist. We need a fourth SLP for the district. To help acquire a fourth full-time SLP, I'm here to advocate moving speech pathologists from a general education T1 salary scale to the educational specialist CO4 salary scale. All three of us full-time OCTS SLPs have 60-plus kids in our caseload across multiple schools. The legal Virginia limit is 68. We complete daily Medicaid billing for speech services, and the OCTS Fed Department receives funding for these billed services. However, when paid on a general education teacher's salary scale, we SLPs do not see anything in return for completing required tasks necessary to secure that funding. School psychologists are also on that Ed Specialist Pay scale, and like school psychologists, SLPs are responsible for conducting specialized evaluations used to make educational diagnostic decisions. However, the value of this is not reflected in our pay. The role of a school-based SLP is vast and demanding. Orange County has a strong team of SLPs who collectively hold over 25 years of service for the district, but we need more help. The district will not be able to hire and retain SLPs to serve the county internally at the current level of pay, as evidenced by that position being open for over five years. Many SLPs are leaving full-time school-based roles to contract with school districts at rates of 75 to 85 plus dollars an hour, with greater bounds based on administrative roles required in schools. In other words, when school districts are required to contract out to SLPs, they frequently pay more or less. Last school year, OCTS's fourth contracted SLP provided remote teletherapy services from Florida. In June, I expressed that in-state tuition costs required to recruit SLPs are an estimated $40,000 for EVA and $46,000 for JMU across the two-year program. I took over a 10 grand pay cut to be here in Orange County three years ago, and while the raises in SLPs stipend slowly close this gap, these raises don't keep up with the rising cost of living for single professionals at the bottom of the pay scale. Pay SLPs on an educational specialist scale to accurately reflect our credentialing roles and responsibilities in schools, reward and recognize the value of the SLPs you currently have, and incentivize additional strong professionals to join the OCTS family. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alyssa Pogler.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting the goes-as-moon. And before I start, I'm quite sure all you saw my tears, and that is because Solo is one of our academic staff, I can do students. So it's a double problem for me, and I watched him grow from a toddler until now, so it was quite emotional to see him achieve such a goal, especially with the climate that we're experiencing and all the obstacles that we're facing. So pardon me while I kind of gather myself before I get this going. Good evening, school board and community members. I would like to thank Superintendent Hornick for his work amending policies to meet the governor's requirements, which led to the board not passing a term sexually explicit proposal. I am hoping to enlighten the board on the benefits of teaching diversity, and hopes the passing of projections to buy some content proposals will be overturned, as it is my thought that the policy reinforces the behaviors mentioned by many parents in previous meetings on racial bullying in our schools. Teaching diversity prepares students to be global citizens by exposing them to people from different cultures or social groups. In an increasingly globalized and connected world, students need to be able to work with diverse groups of people. The benefits of teaching DEI in schools are well-established. In addition to fostering empathy and creativity, teaching about and being in the presence of diversity helps students think critically about their own beliefs and perspectives, work well with others, and develop cultural respect. When people hear the word diversity, they typically think about race. However, accurately talking about diversity, especially in the classroom, includes discussing race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion, socioeconomic status, and different able bodies and various learning styles. Diversity also includes teaching staff. Having teachers and staff members of diverse backgrounds affirms students' cultural identities and enhances the learning environment. Here are some additional benefits of incorporating DEI workers in education. A recent study in the Journal of Child Development from Coons University found that students feel safer in and out of school when they have a diverse education, learning about a variety of cultures, allowing students to become comfortable with cultural differences across social groups and comfortable with themselves, leading to a deeper sense of safety and self-confidence. Thoughtfully planned diversity lessons promote depth of knowledge and give students and teachers exposure to new cultures, different historical figures, and alternative texts. Because of this, students are better able to foster creativity and collaborate, problem solve. When students are allowed to work with a diverse group of peers or with topics that discuss diversity, they can confront stereotypes and discover similarities with their classmates. The benefits of classroom diversity are both academic and socio-emotional. Prioritizing the creation of diverse learning opportunities helps certain students learn about diversity. Exposing students to diverse experiences and people positively impacts their development and impacts on our society. Thus, we will be adequately preparing our students for the world today and the world of tomorrow. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chief.
Hello. Good evening. I would like to start out by saying I appreciate your commitment to the community by voting down Ms. Quinter's problematic resolution. I would urge you to reverse the divisive content resolution, as there are already both state and local policies that direct this material. It does not seem necessary to have a resolution that is actually, that actually causes more division and does not account for accurate historical understanding of American society. As a student, I see that there are little and true issues in the school, such as transportation issues, unsustainable use of plastic in every cafeteria, and an increase in class size due to staffing shortages. I would suggest that you, as a board, propose resolutions that address the actual concerns and not push a bogus political agenda, as these negatively impact both the students and my peers and our community as a whole. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ellen Daniel.
Good evening, Dr. Hornick and school board members. I wanted to come in front of you today to publicly request the board to not adopt the VDEOE 2022 model policies as they are written. Additionally, I am again asking the board to also remove the divisive content resolution that was previously passed. From the VDEOE 2022 model policies, meaning our community feels these policies are sending the wrong message to our children, despite the full title making it sound like policies will afford privacy, increase dignity, and respect within Virginia schools, as what happens many times in politics, it will actually do the opposite. With these policies, they are transphobic and homophobic ideas, and you heard, and as you heard me speak of Ms. Quinter's failed resolution, they will harm the community of students who already face hardships, discrimination in our schools, and community. Additionally, the policies have been delayed for the last thirty, for at least thirty days because of the comments received. I personally think that these policies, if these policies are adopted, they will be taken to court. Instead of adopting the 22 model policies, I would rather for Orange County adopt the 2021 VDEOE model policies, which require its schools to comply with applicable anti- nondiscrimination laws, maintain safe and supportive learning environment, free from discrimination and harassment for all students, take steps to prevent bullying and harassment of transgender students, maintain student records consistent with students' preferred gender identity, identify students consistent with their gender identity, protect students' privacy and confidentiality of sensitive information, enforce dress codes in a manner that did not discriminate against students based upon their gender identity, and allow students to participate in sex-specific school activities based upon their gender identity. After reading that, are you like me and asking, were we doing that? No, we weren't. Why? Well, only the elected officials before us can actually answer that question. However, the precedent is set. If you can ignore the 2021 model policies, you can ignore the 2022 ones as well. Now for the divisive content resolution. The board passed on May 9, 2022. Despite the resolution not having any real weight other than being a description of what the board wants to happen, I want to ask, does the board really want to send the message that this resolution sends to the students, families, and to community of Orange County? I am baffled how you could list Title IV and Title VI of the Civil Rights Act in a resolution that is thinly veiled attempt to remove equality and to discriminate on the basis of color by not even attempting to recognize the factors that have historically prevented minorities from being able to advance at the same rate and the same level of ease that historically been afforded to non-minorities. Additionally, this resolution calls for us to ignore those outside factors, which have been and currently are very much real. That is why I call the board to reverse this racist policy.
The next speaker is Lauren Daniel.
Good evening. I'm sure you guys are pretty much sick of seeing my face just as much as I'm sick of coming up here and speaking. But again, I will not stop until all kids are represented, until the school board addresses the actual issues within our school and quit pushing their political agenda. It's as simple as that. Even last school board meeting showed the push for your political agenda, and Ms. Quinter's comment that she would even refuse a free school bus if it was offered Orange County because she couldn't agree with the Green Initiative. Now, this is all hypothetical. I get it. It's all hypothetical. But again, even Mr. Hopkins, who I differ greatly on, even looked at her and told her how absurd that was. That shows how you are politically motivated, and it is not for the kids. I don't know what your political, personal motivation is on what you're trying to achieve with this, but it is not for the kids. Yours and Ms. Anderson's actions and comments last school board meeting prove that truth, and you guys are showing it time and time again. And again, I don't always agree with Mr. Hopkins, but he certainly, at least last meeting, was willing to set aside things and put the kids first, and that ultimately is what we all want. That's why parents and community members are coming up here time and time again, asking you to put aside your political agenda and be nonpartisan like each of you guys should be and put the kids first. You have a speech-language pathologist that is coming up here and saying, hey, look, we want to be here in Orange County, but you are not paying us enough, and I could quit and come in and contract and make a lot more and do less. You have teachers and staff members that come up here and say that they devote time, endless hours, that do not count as their contract hours and what the minimum that they need to do because they put the kids first, yet they don't get a cycle like our football coaches do or any of our sports members do, but they put the kids first. When is the board going to actually recognize that and start to take action and support those so that we have those good staff employees that support our kids? The difference between you and I is I come up here wanting to represent all kids, all kids, and make sure that they are loved and accepted and have the best learning environment, period. You can't say that. Not each of you on the school board can say that. You've had parents come up here time and time again after public speaking and say, "Orange County needs to address the racism problem." You had a parent pleading with you, and yet there is still nothing done about it. Why? So I urge you, please make a change.
Next, the last. Hearing that there are no other speakers, I will declare public comment closed. And now moving on down to superintendent's reports and recommendations.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have two items this evening. The first, and again, apologies for not having this on earlier. Mr. Honig or myself, we would like to propose a budget development calendar to you all for your review and the dates that we have identified. And Mr. Honig or myself are both available for any questions or concerns that you may have regarding a proposed budget development calendar.
It's from standard as what we followed in the past, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any objections to it.
Any board members have any comments on it? Is it Madam Chairman, is this something I'd like to approve?
Yes, sir. Like I said, it follows pretty standard as what mirrors what we've done in the past for its development. So, anyone having questions?
Well, let's get a motion on the table. I make a motion, we approve the proposed budget development calendar as presented. Then we can have discussion if we want.
Okay. All right. Discussion?
Please, I don't see his presentation to the board supervisors on here.
Because we no longer do that.
Legally, you're required to.
I don't know that we're legally required to. We did it in the past with board supervisors. Prevent, presenting the, doing a presentation to the supervisors. In the past, the communication has been with the chairman and such, as they didn't particularly want to do that. We had a great enough working relationship with them and with Gary and their CFO, so we just didn't do it anymore.
So, under our 22.1-93, there's a co-section for approval of annual budget for school purposes. I agree that I feel like, you may also look it up, but essentially, it says that the school board is to present it to the local governing body. They have states in there. How to prepare and approve an annual budget for education purposes by May 15th, and within 30 days of receipt by the county or municipality of the estimates of state funds, whichever shall occur later. Upon approval, each local school division shall publish the approved annual budget in high-end form, including the estimate required local match on the division's website, and the document shall be made available in hard copy as needed for inspection. Be tuned to two public hearings.
Well, I, I think the hangup is, in the words presented to the county, or essentially, we present it to the county, but we don't do it in a public meeting. I've been here the longest, and when I first joined a school board, we had joint meetings with the supervisors. At some point, the supervisors ask us to change that, and there's no law that says we have to have a public meeting, so in my opinion, the school board is just going along with what the supervisors ask us to do. They would rather have it presented by the administration to their administration, and it works its way down that way. So that's historic, what has happened. If this school board wants to meet with the supervisors, I guess we can make a request.
Yeah, we haven't presented in the last, what, five years, Gary? It's been at least five years since we.
Well, I would say, in fact, I would say it's longer than that. I'm not sure we've ever presented it when Gary was here.
Yeah, we have. Yeah.
First you're here.
Okay. And you've been here for how many years then? So, six years ago.
Ms. First.
I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I'm just trying to fit. I mean, some of our school board members are newer, and some of the audience maybe doesn't know the background of either one, but whichever way we're doing it, we're not breaking the law. That's the only thing that I have to say. But whichever way we're doing it, we're not, not breaking the law. That's the only thing that I have to say.
Well, I'm sorry. I'll say there's another code section, 22.1-92, estimate of money needed for public schools, there's a cost to be distributed. And subsection B says before any school board gives final approval to its budget for submission to the governing body, the school board should hold at least one public hearing, which we do, to receive views of the citizens within the school division. The school board shall cause public notice even at least ten days prior to any hearing, and the newspaper shall have any general circulation within the school division. Passage of the budget by the local government shall be conclusive evidence of compliance with the requirements of this section. And earlier, it does note, um, presentation to... I apologize if we're not Catholic, I just thought about this. So I can, I can come forward at the next meeting with a break on of that, but a budget prepared by the superintendent need approval from the school board to submit to the governing body in some sort of passage would be evidence of compliance and accordance with that code section. So that's 22.1-92, and I first also signed a 22.1-93. I just want to make sure that we're doing this the right way. Those are the only comments, but besides that, I mean, that's still code board media, May fifteenth date. So I'm fine with passing it, but I just want to make sure that if we're required, that we're following.
I don't think that we're breaking the law. I think what we've been doing has been sufficient. I mean, we've gone on the guidance, we may, we always seemingly have a budget in place by May fifteenth, but we are very, we've never had one totally finalized, May fifteenth, because we never are really sure what the state is going to do. You help me if I am speaking out of term, Gary. Am I correct there?
We have, but it's just like, sometimes we have to adjust it as we did last year. We had a budget, and then we had a payment budget, and we got the final budget settled, so.
Yeah, we never, never.
That's usually what happens. We have to amend it.
Yes.
Just add some more information. What the dates that are here in front of us are school board meetings. That doesn't, this isn't the only meetings that happen about the budget. There's a lot of them that happen. We have two representatives of the board that can meet with the county administration, and they do meet with them and discuss it. So just because you see these dates here, these are school board meetings, they involve all five of us. But the chairman and Mr. Jones can meet with the county administration, and they do meet with them at different times to discuss the budget on our behalf.
Well, too, I guess, just to be frank, then, at last year and with this year, I know at least I was caught off guard with, you know, we were still in the budget season, and I had made a point that we're still, you know, talking about big things prior to the exit of another individual in the school system, and I was told that the budget had already been approved when I know that I cannot go on the budget. So I want to make sure that that doesn't happen again this year. I guess I'm fine with the dates that are on the calendar, but I just want to make sure that we're following these two code sections.
Well, reading code section, I can tell you, nothing in there says what we've done in the past is not legal. Added there, too, the new ones, the state budget, the last twenty-seven years, the leaders run a quarter back for a long time, spend money, slow down, spend money, slow down. So it's a very dynamic process, and we are just holding on because, again, we are not the appropriating board supervisors who are going to do that. So when Mr. Honigra has presented the budget for us in the past, he with our counterparts, those numbers have to be looked at and worked, and understood that what are we dealing with? Here's the pocket, and how's it going to get put in there? So moving forward, I think this tentative schedule that we're going to approve, hopefully, is just giving us a footprint for closing season.
Right.
And as far as the presentation or preparation, that information's always handed over to the board supervisors.
I'm just working off the top of my head, but I believe last year was an exceptional year because it wasn't the county and the school board that was holding us up, it was the state. The state didn't approve a budget until about June, and we had to make contracts. So actually, we probably approved a budget based on what we thought the state was going to do, even before the state did it. That's not the way it's supposed to happen. The state's supposed to meet in the general assembly, and at the end of their meeting, they're supposed to approve a budget. Well, it just didn't happen last year, so it was an exceptional year for that. It's just how it works out sometimes. But we're sort of, we're sort of the lower end of the totem pole. Yet we have seven hundred employees, and many of them are required by law to sign a contract by a given date. So what if you don't have a budget approved, but you still have to give them a contract? Well, what you do is you write a little bit, a few sentences at the bottom of the contract that says, "If the money is approved, this contract is valid." So I don't want to go into details, but that's, that's how it's going to go.
I just want to clarify, I'm not insinuating because according to it, code section 22.1-92, the passage of the budget by the local government, which has been done over the last six years, shall be conclusive evidence of compliance with the requirements of this section. I just want to be sure that we, as a board, pass the budget prior to it being submitted to the board of supervisors.
And I will tell you, from the perspective of myself and the administration, we will absolutely meet that requirement. It will be our, our proposed budget and brought to you, and then if and when you pass it, it will then become the school board's approved budget. And then from there, whatever you would like us to do as far as messaging and other things that you would like from us, we can, we can work through that. But it will absolutely come forward and ultimately be the school board's approved budget. I'll tell you, a hundred percent from this administration.
What if you problem is to add a date in there for that particular presentation? For the supervisor?
We'll reach out to their chairperson and share this information and go off of what Mr. Johnson wants to do.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it, because we want to, we do want to start, and Gary and myself, we want to start moving the timeline up a little bit and getting with our folks at the building level and departments and start seeing their requests and the things they might need for the upcoming year. So we wanted, we wanted to make sure that the Board was comfortable with this before we started having those conversations.
All right, all in favor of this calendar by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Kind of nay, just because I would like to have the details of that next step prior to the passage of this calendar.
Okay. Does everyone? Okay. Melissa?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. So four ayes and one nay?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. And next on the agenda, you get to listen to me talk a little bit, so that's always exciting. And that's the cabinet, they love that. So on October thirteenth, we one-hundred day mark, and it certainly has been a great ride so far. I really appreciate the warm welcome to Orange County. So the entry plan that I put together on my arrival was really tried to base, was based on the core values that I believe in, things like integrity, accountability, optimism, and resilience, and it also focused on key guiding principles that I believe as an educator, like all students can and will learn. Our job is to determine how best to make that happen and meet their needs. All students deserve rigorous and relevant instruction that pushes them beyond traditional classroom learning and prepares them for life beyond the walls of a high school, so to speak, after graduation. That we celebrate and value and respect all the members of the Orange County community. And really, all of this work comes to fruition whenever our schools have a positive culture that supports collaboration and excellence. And so if you remember going back through, I kind of tried to delineate and used three E's, so to speak, explore, evaluate, and elevate, and these phases didn't happen in a linear model or progression. In fact, they, they often overlapped, and we are, by the nature of the verbs, we're farther down the road on some than we are on others. But this is an opportunity to just give you a little bit of what I've learned so far. So within our phase of, of what we call exploring, we, we did a lot of meetings, site visits, stakeholder survey. For me personally, anytime I had an opportunity to go meet with folks or go speaking engagements, it was an opportunity to meet and listen and learn. And so we have done things like making sure we've met with all principals, department leaders, visiting all ten sites, meeting with most of the members of the board of supervisors, meeting with the Orange County administrator and the deputy county administrator, meeting with as many faith and community leaders as possible, as well as members of various support organizations, hosting meeting greet events, and of course, gathering input from our stakeholder survey. And some of the highlights or insights that I received from that, it's, it's pretty clear that here in Orange County, we have a highly vested community. They, they truly do love the Orange County school system. They believe in it. They feel a strong sense of pride, and rightfully, they have high expectations for our performance across the board. It's also pretty clear that within our community, you saw some of them on display tonight. We have a, a, well, litany, just a larger list of excellent educators, and that's more than just teachers, okay? It's staff and team members. It's, it's the cafeteria folks, it's the bus drivers, it's the teachers, it's the building-level administrators. We have a lot of talented folks who really want to do what's best for Orange County public schools. It was pretty clear through the work that I did that the, the, the members of the community want to be engaged, and they want to be partners in education. There is considerable support for enhancing career and technical education. There are certainly different viewpoints as far as how that looks and details, but it is, it is absolutely a hundred percent that the folks in this community support enhancing career and technical education programming. I think folks see the value in it, and they know that that's where real-world learning comes to life. It is where your math and your science and your history and sometimes the subjects that unfortunately can work in isolation come together, and you can apply those. We know that there are some concerns about population growth, particularly on the eastern end of the county, both right now in the areas, particularly Wilderness Shores, for example, and then the potential for the Wilderness Crossing development in the eastern end. That is certainly a concern. And there's a general consensus that came forward, and so I will approach this at a higher level and give a little more detail. There's a general consensus of not wanting schools to be governed and overrun by politics. Now, the, the caveat to this, as I've seen, is folks that I have spoken to that would be more on the left of the political spectrum are very adamant about things that they don't want infiltrating from the right and vice versa. So when it comes to a role as like a superintendent or cabinet members, that puts us in a, in a bind sometimes, that makes it difficult to try to find a little ground. But I will let this community know, I will always do my best to listen and be a superintendent for all of our young people. Our second step was to really evaluate as many of the aspects of Orange County public schools as we could. So we did reviews of policies and regulations. We reviewed the 2018 through 2023 strategic plan. We reviewed the current capital improvement plan, which is set to expire at the end of this year, and we know that we have work to do there. We reviewed the fiscal year '23 budget and are beginning the process, as is evidenced tonight, of building our calendar and beginning to work on next year's budget. We're viewing legislative priorities, of course, from the school board and things that they have brought forward as far as aspects that they feel that are important, as well as the discussion that happened at the last board meeting, and will happen again this evening, information and policy proposals and legislative priorities of the BSBA. And of course, thank you again for working with us to finalize a budget calendar. As far as what we learned from this evaluation, and I believe this, Doctors Anderson and Honigra did a nice job at the previous work session. We know we have, as you can see tonight, some outstanding areas of student achievement, and we have some schools that really shine and do incredibly well. And then we have gaps in achievement, and we, we have learning gaps in service subgroups. When you look at a division-wide perspective, our students with disabilities and our African-American students, there is, there is a difference in how they are performing relative to other groups. School attendance is a huge concern, and Mr. Hopkins spoke about that at the, at the meeting when Judy and Renee were giving their overview of our school performance. Accentism was a huge issue last year. And it is, I think, a little too easy to say that was all COVID-related because kids were being sent home for quarantine. I think that's the easy way out. That was part of it, and I think that exacerbated the problem. But I think the problem existed beforehand. And as educators, we are, we are fighting against cell phones and devices and constant entertainment and the world of fingertips. And it's really on us to, to design instruction and that engages students and makes them see the value in what we are bringing forward. We, we are, they are our customers, and we are selling a product. Essentially, the product we're selling is a quality education and a diploma that we want to mean something and be a ticket to the future, and we need that to, to be highly valued. And so that's, that's our challenge, is to make that something that will bump kids to put, make kids want to put the phone down and engage with us. Student attendance, we absolutely have to continue to make strides. Going back, and I think, Ms. Quinter, you made excellent valid points. The, the baseline that the state holds schools to, which is we want fifteen percent or less of our students to miss ten percent or less of the days. We have, and we are continuing to ensure that we have action steps before that. We, we have to catch students when they're at the two, three, four, five day mark early in the year. If we're waiting till March and April to address attendance, we've already, we've already lost them. And so I thought that was well said when we were going through the school improvement about the importance of hitting that early and often. We know that the, we feel that the strategic plan that's currently in place has some very logical and relevant goals. COVID definitely put a damper on progress towards it, I think divisions across the country. They went into survival mode, and so that kind of put the brakes on a lot of things. And so we know that things like, that are in the plan now, like computer science proficiency, increasing student achievement, working on the salary scale, enhanced communication and building our brand, those continue to be really, really important aspects that we have to continue to hit through the next strategic plan process. Whatever we ultimately decide to do with career and technical education, et cetera, there was a pretty robust master plan crafted in the 2012, 2013 timeframe for Orange County High School that also included some potential additions, that concluded additions, including classroom and CTE space. That's something that we have to take a critical look at, especially as we begin in the capital improvement process. We know that we have to continue to provide optimal learning environments for our students, and we have to continue to do everything we can to recruit and retain a strong and diverse workforce. The last component I codified is elevating, and this was more in the realm of action steps, things that we wanted to do, like getting with our principals and staff members to reinforce what it means to lead, what it means to learn, what it means to collaborate, to reinforce expectations in Orange County public school. Initiate, and we have already begun this, and we're very excited, initiated an overhaul of our school website that is going to be an excellent source of information, as well as a way to build our brand and communicate with our families. We have done a lot of work internally to streamline communication, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Met recently with advisory... Met recently with advisory groups from parent support staff, teacher, and the minority advisory groups. And that has been, provided a great opportunity to start reviewing our core beliefs and values because then we have to make sure that that work is solidified before we move into the next set of strategic planning processes. We're continuing to try to promote every day a positive culture and climate. What you saw here this evening with recognizing faculty and students, that is being replicated in a number of different ways. It doesn't have to look the same, but the expectation doesn't change that we want our principals and our, and our teachers to find ways to recognize the people who go above and beyond. And it's, and the continuous challenge is to find the students who are making small amounts of growth that sometimes might not otherwise be super noticeable and find some ways to recognize that and reinforce that with those particular students. Because we want their experience in school to change. If they went from a, a D+ to a B, they might not be the top 10, but they have made some considerable growth. They missed five days in September and only two days in October. We want that child's experience to be different. We want them to be reinforced and valued for that. And we also are continuing to support any and all efforts that help us address relevant and rigorous instructional practices. And we want to achieve tangible outcomes. We want to be able to come back next September, October and tell me about areas that we have grown and things that we have been able to accomplish. Some of the insights that we gained by going through that process, the, the upcoming strategic planning process is, is really going to be a critical step to make sure that we have alignment between what we believe and what we value and the action steps that we are actually going to implement and take. We know that salary and benefits is incredibly important, so we have to be competitive with the salary and pay package. However, we need to also enhance and sustain positive culture and climate in our buildings because it's, those two things have to work hand in hand. If I get paid a lot of money, but I really, really hate where I work and some of the things that I do and potentially even colleagues, that, that isn't going to lead me to stay. That's not how you build and sustain a workforce. So those two really have to work hand in hand. One of the ways that we enhance and sustain a culture and climate, yes, is recognition, but it is also providing meaningful opportunities for people to grow and develop professionally. Enhance our mentoring. Those are all very much key factors in recruiting and retention. And when we go to job fairs and when we are interviewing prospective candidates, that's what they want to know. In addition to the salary scale, they want to know, how can we as Orange County folks and mentors, et cetera, guide them and help them so that they can come in and hit the ground running? We also learned that we need to maintain an intentional focus on rigor and relevance. And you, you'll notice I, I use those terms a lot because I believe in them. I believe that that instruction needs to be rigorous, meaning push kids far enough beyond their capacity that it stretches their thinking, but not shoot so far over their heads that it shuts them down. It's, it's a balance, but our teachers are excellent and they know how to find that. And so we don't, we don't set the benchmark at the SOL pass rate. We don't set it at the, at the, at the cut score. We set our benchmark much higher so that ultimately, when the student sits to take an SOL test, we want that to be one of the easier exams that they have taken in their, in this school year, not the hardest ones. So we, we don't set the ceiling at the floor, so to speak. We're very, very excited about the new platform that our webs, for our website. I'd like to thank Dr. Honaker and Ms. Byron for their work. That's really going to help us build communication, enhance what we're doing, build our brand and help tell our story. And anytime we are looking, I heard this a lot from teachers and other folks who are just generally concerned, when we are looking at, I'll use the term instructional resources broadly, this could be a program, it could be books, it could be supplemental materials. It is really important that we consider the ease of teacher use. We wanted something that can be implemented fairly easily, that is aligned with the curriculum, and you actually get some return on that investment. So I'll talk a little bit about the start, stop, continue process. And this was done in a couple of different ways. It was done through surveys, okay? So when we sent out to survey, we had it open for little more than a month. And we had a hundred and seventy-seven total responses, eighty-one from folks who identified as parents or guardian, six students, twenty-seven community members, fifty-eight identified themselves as OCPS staff, three of them identifying as being retired from Orange County Public Schools, four that identified themselves as local business owners and one as an alumni. And we had meetings with individual stakeholders. I know I sat down with well more than twenty-five individual meetings specifically to speak on the topic of start, stop, continue. I want to listen, I want to learn. Numerous visits to school sites, anytime we got a chance to go out and speak, meet people. And of course, being involved in local organizations, just to name a few, Rotary, Chamber, and the Economic Partners Group, those all gave us quite a, a breadth of, of places from which we could learn and pull information. And so with that, I'll kind of give you some highlights of our overarching themes, okay? One through five, engagement, staffing, instruction, culture and climate, and logistics. Okay, so this part of the presentation is what we learned by, via the survey and also anecdotally from speaking with folks, et cetera. In the area of engagement, and are the stakeholders who responded made it very clear that they want the school division that they feel listens and truly hears their concerns, responds, provides a format for stakeholders to bring concerns, thoughts, and ideas forward. They want transparency, they want effective and timely communication, and they want, they want to be engaged and they want the school division to reach out to engage our parent and guardians to, to have real and meaningful participation. In the area of staffing, salary and benefits, of course, was a huge, was a huge theme. Folks also told us they, they appreciate and like the yearly bonuses. So thank you, school board, for the, the work that you did to do that for this year. Anything we can do to enhance our recruiting and retention, engaging in purposeful recognition and reward activities, listening to concerns from employees, supporting employees with quality professional development. For our teachers, it was keeping planning periods sacred and continuing to work with the school board to set the tone for valuing teachers and staff. In the realm of instruction, the overarching themes that we heard, teachers, by and large, as well as building level administrators, wanted us to remain committed to strong professional learning communities, which is basically the opportunity for teachers to work together as opposed to working in isolation. So they're not reinventing the wheel, and you give an opportunity to gather data, compare student progress, and enhance your instructional practices. Our community really values any, any concerted efforts to not over test students. I agree with that a hundred percent. We take more time testing, that takes away from our, from instruction. The, very clearly, folks had demonstrated a concern about finding an appropriate balance between what I will call computer-supported learning, screen time, and more traditional methods of learning, i.e. paper and pencil. I also happen to agree with that balance. For many of you here, you saw my two that are here this evening. My daughter can function great on the computer. My son does not function so great on the computer. And so finding that balance is, is very important. Enhancing opportunities for students to have hands-on learning experiences and open up more career pathways, increase dual enrollment offerings, and ensuring that we have a path for students to earn an associate's degree upon graduation. And overall, a general sentiment that we want students prepared for life, not just college. And I think where we stand in the country today is a lot, is, has come from a push over the last twenty-five years of everybody kind of has to go to college. And we know that that is not the way it needs to be, nor the way it should be. There are, there are many, many paths to success. And so focusing on skills like the ability to think creatively, to evaluate, to be able to judge a situation and respond, those type of skills transcend what you want to do after your secondary education, whether that's post-secondary in any way, college, trade school, et cetera. Our, our community wants our students to be prepared for life, and I couldn't agree more with that, quite frankly. In the area of culture and climate, they really want our, our student, our, our teachers and our staff to have a student-first approach, keep their needs in the forefront. Anything that we can engage in fun experiences that we can bring to them, they are for. They want us to continue to foster and enhance what I just called OC pride and a strong sense of family and the family structure that already exists in Orange County and OCPS. They want us to make sure we have appropriate responses for student behavior and enhance behavior management, ensure that we have accountability and consistency across sites. They want to make sure that our buildings have a safe and secure environment that is conducive to the teaching and learning process. And in the realm of logistics, we heard a lot, and I think much of this has been improved. And so I know Mr. Sarver's here early on through the summer. There, there was large concerns about improved communication, about buses and transportation, a reliable bus service to and from school. There was discussions that were brought forward about the consideration of the deed for a new high school at some point in the eastern end of the county, a school schedule that limits asynchronous learning days. And so I'd like to thank the school board for your willingness to work with us on not having the remaining two asynchronous days. I believe that was a huge win for students and our teachers. A lot of folks want a, a school calendar that includes a one start time for all. That would absolutely be beautiful. I, I do not foresee that being something that we can accomplish immediately, but certainly see the value in it. And anything we can do to enhance our current facilities with upgraded amenities up to and including HVAC. As now, just walk you briefly down some of the things that we have been doing, action steps, so to speak. Much of this commenced within the last hundred days. And some of the other things, I'm going to draw for because I think it's really important for the community to know. Some of the other things that I'm going to highlight began before my tenure here and have come to fruition or come to completion, but they absolutely helped address many of the concerns that were voiced and the, and the themes that were brought forward in our start, stop, continue process. So we'll start with what we do here, which is instruction. And in order to make gains based on the, the concerns that I brought forward this evening, as well as the, the concerns that you heard from Doctors Anderson and Honaker two weeks ago or so, we have overhauled our school improvement process. This year, it, it isn't just the buildings fend for themselves. It is truly a collaborative effort between the principal and division leadership because central office's job is to support the folks in the school. And if we don't know what the folks in the school need, you cannot support the folks in the school. So the school improvement process this year and the plans have included goal-setting and rich discussions about best practices, about tiered supports, instructional strategies that we can pursue to, to ensure that we have a focus on improving student performance across all subgroups, not just your overall average, and really, really targeted focus on attendance and student engagement. Inside the realm of teacher collaboration, prioritizing and establishing time for teachers to collaborate and work together. We're continuing ongoing training, thanks to our folks in the curriculum instruction department, as well as working with Dr. John Almerode, who is a highly distinguished and regarded professor from JMU in teaching and building common vocabulary and teaching our division leadership, our building leadership, about the best way to work in professional learning communities. All in efforts that we empower our teachers to make real, true, teacher-driven instructional decisions. I would say that we are on the forefront, particularly thanks to Dr. Anderson for her work to make sure that we are on the forefront of being in alignment with the Virginia Literacy Act, which is a bipartisan act that is geared towards ensuring structured literacy and improving literacy instruction across the Commonwealth. So we are already ahead of the game, making sure that our work and our instruction is aligned with that state guidance. And we're also working closely with the Virginia T-TAC to provide training to principals. I was just in the training, I guess that was two weeks ago, and they're coming back this week to meet with building level principals, all again to make sure that we have consistency with terminology and practices. Because quite frankly, literacy is critical thinking, the ability to read, write, communicate, and speak. That is, those are skills that students need for life. Working with principals on screen time and how to reduce that and do more things on paper and pencil so we can help articulate what that balance will be. And then, of course, within instruction, CTE holds a huge component. It is more than just finding physical space. It is also our work with Chamber, Rotary, the Economic Partners Group, reaching out to businesses and key organizations to find internships and other work experiences for students. We've done a lot of work, thank you, Dr. Honaker, for your work on highlighting where we've been with CTE and some, and a vision for where we can go with CTE, identifying goals for future CTE expansion. And just a quick plug as well, one of our, one of our favorite programs here, I would say, is the partnership with Germana so that our students can attend a automotive tech program that is housed at the Kalkmaer Center. In the realm of safety and security, and Mr. Barry, I might need your help here a little bit to talk about these, but the, we are continuing to work to ensure that we install secure entrance vestibules at all of our sites. Orange Elementary School and Unionville and Lightfoot were all completed this summer. Locust Grove Middle School already had one in place. And at Gordon Barber, that is part of the ongoing project at Gordon Barber. And so that leaves this building, the primary school, Locust Grove Elementary School, Prospect Heights, those buildings.
Elementary and the high school.
Remaining, and the high school. And we are hoping, we are very hopeful that we here, within the next week, that we will receive a grant funding for, based on security needs for divisions. And that's what we focused, our, the nature of our grant on was to install these remaining secure entrances. If the funding comes in, but it's a little bit less than what we would want, we are going to prioritize the high schools and the primary school because at Locust Grove Elementary and at Prospect Heights, there already is a vestibule. It's, it would function a little bit differently, but at least there is an additional barrier between the outside doors and the interior hallway and the main office of the building. We've done a lot with enhancing cameras. And I know we have grant funding that we are seeking, but we have moved to an all web-based system at the high school. And our long-term goal, as we continue to upgrade and improve the cameras at the high school, was to utilize the cameras that we take out of there and put those into the other sites so that we can get better coverage at our other locations. We have also recently finalized installing cameras at the JROTC Annex Building at the high school, which is very important. We've done a lot of work with Chris Locker and other folks in the sheriff's office to streamline and enhance our internal procedures for threat assessment and lockdowns and procedures. We are very, very thankful for the board supervisors, as well as the sheriff office for their work on approving and ultimately hiring additional school resource officers. Up through last year, it was three to cover all of the sites. I believe they are now at six or seven. Six in the schools.
Three out of them.
And three others in the academy. Ultimately, the goal will be to have eleven so that we can cover all ten sites and have an additional one to rove and fill in as necessary. So that is, that is huge, and we appreciate the partnership and the communication. Chris was just here the other day, and we were just working on threat assessment, continuing to refine those processes. So we're doing a lot of work to make sure that lockdowns, threat assessments, our response to crises are on, are above reproached, and we are ready to go because that type of planning is, is really important. Sadly, we have to do it, but it is absolutely critical that we do. In the area of engagement, I've already talked about our redesign and relaunch of the website, which we are anticipating in January of 2023. We have created, I talked a little bit about internal communication. We've created a principals hub, and that will also, we have it now via Canvas, and we will be able to transition it to a, a staff log on part of our new website. And this enhances our ability to communicate internally with our building level administrators, particularly with memos and other pieces of guidance and information that come from either the, the state superintendent of instruction or potentially secretary, the secretary of public instruction, to make sure that we to make sure that we are hitting deadlines and we're meeting goals, we are remaining in compliance with standards of quality, et cetera. We're having follow-up discussions with our principals now after school board meetings. So Wednesday after every board meeting, we are gathering via Zoom, and we are making sure that the principals are aware of everything that's going on at the school board level and what we need to be accomplished. Of course, in the area of engagement, the advisory committees are absolutely critical, and it's, it's been a pleasure to meet with each of them. Thanks to Alton Terran, who was here earlier this evening. She was taking those pictures of our students and staff. We've really committed ourselves to improving and enhancing our presence on social media. And that is also a recruiting and retention tool, quite frankly. Monthly video messages to the community, and we're doing a lot of proactive work in, in various processes for planning things like a student code of conduct, work on the grading scale, calendar development, as well as the upcoming strategic plan. In the area of workforce culture and climate, things that we're doing in the recognition realm. You've seen the monthly board meeting recognition, and we also do what we call a U-Rocket, which is kind of an internal teak, recognition, staff member to staff member. Within salary and benefits, we're very grateful and we thank the board for their support, bringing back tuition reimbursement. We're very, very thankful for their support, and we are now providing a stipend to our nurses who have a bachelor's of science in nursing, and that stipend is commiserated with what a classroom teacher gets for having a master's degree. And so that has helped us recruit and retain nurses. Thank you to the board as well for supporting us. We made a salary adjustment earlier this year for bus drivers, car drivers, and bus monitors, which has helped us start to fill the coffers. And I know we've on boarded a, a number of bus drivers, Mr. Sarver, correct, over the past?
Six.
Six, just in the past couple of weeks, really. And so we, we really appreciate that, as well as the board's support on taking care of our folks with both short and long-term disability now for all VRS eligible employees. We're doing a lot of work within the realm of mentoring and PD. Our folks in curriculum instruction, particularly our coordinators, have spent a lot of time improving our teacher mentoring program. There's never been a greater need for a mentoring program based on the number of new folks that we are hiring. And it's not just us, it's across, it's across the Commonwealth, of course. But making sure that that mentoring program is stabilized, it is, it is organized, coherent, and ultimately productive for our new folks. Extending professional development opportunities aligned with school improvement goals. We are making sure our folks have the opportunity, whether it's in-house or to get out and, and be involved in professional learning. We feel that's important for their, for their ability to grow. And honestly, we are really trying to capitalize on the expertise that's in-house, and we have a lot of it here in Orange County. Within the realm of recruiting, I have a meeting on the ninth. We are working with Calpepper, Madison, and Rappahannock on a lab school idea that we would submit for the lab school funding that the governor has spoken a lot about. We are hoping that we will partner with JMU. And that lab school would be focused on pathways for teachers to, to fill the coffers of teacher, of teacher vacancies. We're very fortunate now, we are active members in a human resources roundtable that's put on by the Office of Economic Development. We're expanding our efforts in the virtual recruiting world specifically, indeed. That has been incredibly beneficial to us to find people, and we're continuing to do everything we can to participate in job fairs. We're already planning in the spring to go to the Perk Job Fair in the Roadville and just a bunch of others. And we'll also be in Mary Washington two Saturdays on the nineteenth to meet their pending graduates to talk about Orange County and what we have to offer. Finally, in the area of logistics, for, for the, to address the concerns about the eastern end of the county, Mr. Barry, for quite a while now, has been a very active member in the Wilderness Crossing Architectural Review Committee, where he has repeatedly brought forward and clarifying our needs and ensuring that there is a site available at Wilderness Crossing to put a high school. We're working for facility upgrades, and we will work with Ms. Page and Mr. Jones upcoming as we solidify our CIP needs. But we are pursuing finishing up the enclosed walkways at Gordon Barber, Lightfoot, and Unionville. The Unionville walkway was designed and went to bid. Unfortunately, with supply chain issues and inflation and the cost of everything, that bid, the lowest bid came back double what was originally budgeted. And so we are trying to find some ways to navigate that issue. We are currently working and waiting to hear back on the Lightfoot and the Union, and the Lightfoot and the Gordon Barber connectors. And we are hoping to use as the, of the money that we received recently from the state, it's based on our ADM, additional construction funding. And right now, our priority order is to address the Gordon Barber roof first, the Unionville roof second, then the Unionville connector, and then the Lightfoot Elementary School connector. Regarding Gordon Barber, there is a potential that we could work with the board of supervisors and get a change order through that we might hopefully be able to get some additional monies approved that we could complete that work within the scope of the current project with a work, with a change order. We will know a little bit more about the feasibility of that here in the next couple of weeks. We're still waiting on the design and the cost proposal to come through on that. Is that correct, Mr. Barry? And then, of course, we are getting the calendar committee ready. So we're going to be discussing priorities, and we're going to be getting that group together to build a calendar. And then with respect to transportation, of course, kudos to you, Justin, and your work with the Zonar and the Stop Finder app, new radios in all buses. And of course, air conditioning on the buses has been a huge win for everybody. And so as we go through, I have a couple of quotes that I really love. One from Lisa Churchill, "Success is not final, and we have some successes, and so we're not going to rest on those morals." Failure is not fail. I wouldn't say we have failure, we have challenges and areas of growth. But regardless, this quote is the courage to continue to count, and we will do that. And we have been through these over the last couple of years. And so Robert Schuler said, "Tough times never last, but tough people do." And that is definitely a quote that all folks can live by, I would think. And so again, this is a thank you and a heartfelt thank you to the school board. First and foremost, the trust that you have put into me and your continued support. And to everybody here tonight, the broader community, it's truly been a pleasure transitioning. And this, this information, as well as kind of a full deliverable report, will be available on the website tomorrow. And this presentation that you saw here will be linked to the agenda by Ms. Byron, and will be available that way as well. So again, thank you, and it's been a pleasure leading and learning in Orange County.
Thank you, Dr. Horne. Well, today, you came in with boots on the ground and you've got sex pills in your.
I would consider, thank you.
No, that's everyone. Okay, so at this time, we will drop down to the endorsement of the proposed provisions to the VSPA twenty twenty-two legislative positions. So, Mr. Hopkins, would you like to lead this?
Yes. Just for those that weren't at the last school board meeting, this is continuation. We had about twelve legislative positions that I was asking the Orange County School Board to take a position on because I represent them at the group, at the Virginia School Board Association Annual Meeting, which happens to be this coming Thursday. But I don't go to that meeting expressing my opinions. I go there expressing the school board's opinion. So we had about twelve legislative positions, and we dispensed with most of them. We rejected at the last meeting, position number four. No, let me, let me clarify that. At the last meeting, we took a position to object to position number two. Basically, on the, on the wording, it's always when you're talking to Richmond, we're always asking for more money, that's obvious. But at the end of the sentence is what they put in that caused some concern because they said more frequent SOL assessments. And we just, I'm saying, the school system and the state just went through about three years ago. About three years I took to get some of the SOL tests removed because it said we were doing too much testing. And this sounds like they're asking us to put it back again. So this school board has already told me that they want to oppose that position. So we're not talking about that tonight. What happened is we came to a tie vote on, on two positions, and so that's what we need to solve tonight. If we don't solve it, then I just won't vote for it or vote against it, I'll just abstain. But if we can come to a conclusion tonight, then whatever the board decides to do, I will follow that instruction and vote the way they instruct me to do. Actually, both of them are very similar. Let's deal with, let's deal with legislative position number four, which is on page sixty-nine. All we're talking about, there's a lot, you'll see a lot of printing there, but all we're talking about is that one sentence that's underlined. We can't read it, says, "The V-SBA supports state assistance and facilitation for school divisions moving from their fleet from diesel-powered buses to electric buses." So we're just voting whether to put that in or take it out. So if you don't mind, I'll just put a motion on the table, and then we discuss it and have a vote. I make, I make the motion that we support the recommendation and add that sentence to the V-SBA colisus.
I'll step in it.
Okay, now discussion.
I'll just rate right because I was one kind of dragging this one in the next one. It says, "The V-SBA supports state assistance and facilitation for school divisions moving their fleet from diesel-powered buses to electric buses." Now, we live in a very rural community. We, our span of driving is very far. And if some drivers are on the roads until seven, eight o'clock later at night. And I just can't support funding to transition from diesel to electric buses at this time. I think if they're going to be lobbying for money for our county, for across the state, I don't think that they need to necessarily be telling us how we're going to spend the money. I think if there's funds available for transportation, each school district should be allowed to determine how that's going to satisfy their needs. So that's why I will be voting no to adding this legislative position amendment.
Actually, I agree with part of what she said. Let me read what I have here rather than just talk off the top of my head. V-SBA's number one priority when speaking to the Richmond General Assembly on their behalf is no unfunded mandates. This is not listed in the policy position because that policy is, is not being changed. I believe the opposition objections for the two proposed edits of V-SBA's position is because money from Richmond always comes with strings attached. And they are, they, my two colleagues here are absolutely right about that. Any money we get from Washington, from Richmond, or from almost anybody except the, the local, comes with strings attached. I'll give you an example. When we'll talk about Richmond, we'll talk about the United States Department of Agriculture. That almost completely fund our food service program. And there are lots of strings attached to it, and since we have it, we've accepted those strings. And one of the ones that I don't particularly like is they tell us what we have to charge for meals. They tell the school board what we have to charge a teacher to eat lunch at school. The school board either has to accept there what they say, or we have to, or we don't get the money. So although, I mean, I spend my time here, and the community invests in me and these other school board members, the authority to spend sixty million dollars. But yet, I have to give up the right to what a teacher pays for lunch to get that USP at eight dollars. That's just an example of strings attached. But obviously, the school board accepts the money, and we have to do that. I, I, I don't say anymore about that. The General Assembly does not provide money for school buses or school construction. The money we spend on buses and school construction is local taxpayers' dollars. My position is if we get two dollars from the state, that is two dollars savings to Orange County taxpayers. The two, Virginia School Board Association polished positions we are discussing tonight involve asking for state money to help with the cost of buses and school construction. Yet there will be strings, but let us see what the strings are, then we can decide. If I understand the opposition's position, they do not want to ask for this money from the state because the mandates may be attached. I agree with this concern, but support asking for the money. The bottom line is that the local school board can accept or reject state money. There is no mandate to accept the money, as the school board is the decision maker. I support these two policy positions, which are asking for money. If by chance the General Assembly says yes, then we, then we have to make a decision. Then we determine if we want to accept the conditions. But to me, not asking for the money because of what may be attached is not the way to go. I'm proud to ask the state for money if it will lower the tax burden on the citizens of Orange County.
I would like to make there's a distinction between legislative position number four and number five. I know we're talking about number four right now, and there's nothing in there that states receiving or lobbying for more funds for the electric buses. But there is already wording in legislative position number five regarding school facility destruction. So they still will be lobbying for funds. They just won't be telling us what to do and how to spend those funds. So at least the V-SBA won't be lobbying for that. So I just wanted to make those distinctions clear, so that way we're not wanting both four and five together.
So you're saying in legislative position number four, when it says VAS, Virginia School Board Association, supports state assistance, you, you say that may not be money?
No, 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 I'm saying if that, that wording's not added, then legislative position number four, by default, would not be lobbying for increased state assistance because nothing else in the prior paragraph or the statement before states such. So if it were to pass, then they would be lobbying for school divisions moving their fleet from diesel power to electric buses. So adding that will be a request of the V-SBA to lobby for additional funds. However, in position number five, that wording is already in the position.
Okay. So, so you're telling me now you can support position number four?
No, I just wanted to make the distinction that legislative position number four and five are different because five does have language in there saying that they're going to be lobbying for additional funds, four does not.
Oh, what do you, what, you say it does, but I, when I read state assistance, I think money.
No, yes, I agree. So number four, let's just talk about position four first, everyone. So our, who is willing, we decided, okay. Prior to position four, so is everyone good on position one?
I think one through three, we were all.
Okay, so one through three, we're good. So we're discussing number four.
No, no, wait a minute. With two, we, we, we solved all the positions except two.
Which was?
We, we rejected number two.
Yes, and number four. And number four?
One and three. We're talking about four now.
Okay.
So I thank you for bringing, but I just wrote my subject on both of them because to be there both of my lines.
You know, this, this is just a proposed position. When Jim goes to the legislative thing on Thursday, it may not even pass as a position. It may not even make it from the recommendations as a proposed position. So I mean, it may die on Thursday. It may not even make it to a position.
I think there's going to be a vote on that on Thursday.
Oh, it will. It will be a vote.
I just, I just, what we're talking about is what, how do you want me to vote?
I'm still going to stand by voting no for number four just because if they're going to be lobbying for school divisions to move entirely from diesel to electric, that's going to pose an additional burden on us and the taxpayers.
I don't think, I don't think they're lobbying for us to go to diesel, from diesel to power. They're just lobbying, saying if there were divisions that want to go from diesel to powered electric buses, that they will help lobby for money for any division that's willing to do that.
Correct. But we all know that with legislation, there's strings attached, like Mr. Hopkins was saying, and this is going to be a way to push for the transition, which I don't think is going to be economically sustainable for our county.
Well, I think we could use it in Orange. If we were to receive electric bus, we could use it in around the town of Orange. I'm sure that so many mileage it would allow us to go. Now, outside in the rural areas, no, I don't, I don't see that.
Correct, but it says.
I don't even know what, how big the batteries in a bus would be and what there's, I don't know enough about that to say we would ever go to electric bus. But if they are going to lobby, if people want electric bus, and we can use it in the town of Orange and it's free, but it's not going to.
It's not free, but I'll probably just add, maybe this will solve what everybody's concerned about, and that underline portion, the school divisions, and just add language that says if they choose.
We can't add language. This is the proposed budget.
If we don't have the free will and choice, I wouldn't support it. I'd be in there on number four.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call the vote.
All right. Vote for number four. Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Melissa?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Ms. Whitaker?
Hey.
And I would say yes if it was a free bus, but I shouldn't vote. So if they're on number four position, isn't it?
Okay, let's, let's move on to the next one because I think if we get through this one, we'll be finished. And that's on page seventy, position number five, and it's about the full sanctions continuing on the sentence. For those who can't read it, it says, "Include specific incentives for energy-efficient construction and renovation to reduce the lifetime operating cost of school facilities." Period. Okay, I'll make the motion and we approve it.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So my position's the same for this one. I don't think that the V S B A should be lobbying to tell us how to. Yes, I think that reducing the lifetime operating costs of school facilities is going to be beneficial. However, as we saw with twenty twenty and twenty-one and moving forward, we don't know what's going to be available when and where. And as we also know with budgets and funding and government spending, if we don't use that money in a appropriate time, we're going to lose that money. So I think if there is funds that can be used towards construction, I think that the schools themselves should be able to determine how to use that. And this, this legislative priority will still lobby for additional funding. It just doesn't have that caveat of specific incentivizing for certain materials.
I would, I would see it different in that, you know, it's got the word incentive. And obviously, nobody's going to build a facility that's going to put you underwater with, you know, that construction. I don't have any problem with the language. I think that if they're going to push forward in every, the astronomical number of schools that were built in the World War II period, I just believe that it's a good direction forward for buildings and infrastructure.
I guess I think through local government, we're going to be energy efficient anyway. We don't need V S B A lobbying for us to be energy efficient. I mean, there's, there's already things in place that we have to be, and it's only going to increase from, from the state down even further up in the federal down. So I don't know that these particular words are going to do any difference as far as getting us any more money because if we're already happy to do it again from the state or the federal, then why do we need them lobbying for special incentives? So my position.
Well, I was involved when we did the middle school at Lucas Grove, and architects came in with all kinds of recommendations for saving energy. I mean, they came in with all kinds of recommendations, but Orange County got to make the choice. If it was for a certain kind of lighting or certain kind of windows, most of those were approved, but they wanted us to consider a geothermal heating system. The cost of geothermal was just too great, and we declined to do that. My point is, whether it's buses or whether it's school construction, the people that make the decision are sitting right up here. Nobody in Richmond makes a decision about what we do with their schools. And I feel the same way about buses. I just say again, right now, we get zero dollars from Richmond for school construction. We get zero dollars for buses. If they would give me one dollar, I'd be glad to take it.
Well, I have a question. So when was this first policy put into place? When, when did they start lobbying for this particular legislative position number five? Because if we, if they have not provided us any funding and they've gone at it before and tried to ask for funding, adding this extra incentive, is that going to get us anywhere else?
Well, Virginia School Board, I, I can't give you the total exactly when they started it, but this is, this is moving in the, in the General Assembly. The General Assembly has avoided getting involved with giving any money to anybody for school construction. But over the last four or five years, there's been a big push from the southwestern school districts. They've even got a consortium together, and they've been talking to the General Assembly. And I believe the General Assembly is going to give them some money. Now, it's not going to maybe help us, but what I'm saying is, there is, at certain times, a momentum to move from local funding to state funding. One of the ideas about that is the state can do, can see how the money goes. So they, I mean, Fairfax County can build, you know, a gigantic school with the, with the most expensive things in it they can find and get, but somebody down southwest, they, they can't afford to do that. So if a state is not involved, then they can make it balance it out so that everybody could have a first-class school. So I'm, I'm not arguing for state getting involved, but I'm just telling you there is an argument that maybe states should take over the whole funding of school buildings. It happened in Maryland while I was a teacher there. It was all local funding, and then the, the General Assembly, I don't know what it's called in Indianapolis, changed the rules. And then all of a sudden, you needed a new high school, the money just came from the state. So it can be done either way. I guess I'm really off the subject, so.
I just think if there's funding to be available, someone in Southwest Virginia are not going to be installing terminals for charging electric vehicles, whereas their faculty probably would. So if you're looking at that sort of thing, it's kind of like apples to oranges, where you're incentivizing the schools that have funds to be having these top-notch materials, whereas smaller school districts are kind of without enough funding because they can't follow the incentivized instruction. So it's kind of the same thing as the last position, but I think we need this worked together. So I would like to call the question.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Melissa?
May.
Mike?
I'm yes on this.
Chelsea?
I'm yes.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I think we've completed, unless there's, essentially, two positions are, are asked, two positions are called, and then they'll be discussed, and they'll be a vote, and I will vote no.
All right. So finishing that up. Ms. Whitaker, do you have a Head Start policy council?
Yes, we met on October seventeenth. There's a couple of possible new members, and now this information might be changed. We have our next meeting coming up on November twenty-first. So like I said, this is information from the seventh to October. But we're excited about having new members because we will be able to have forum and be able to vote on things, which will be nice. Budget lines, there's been upgrades that were needed that have been addressed, largely with money from the coronavirus relief. At that time, they were looking for an assistant teacher at Lucas Grove and a co-ed specialist. Fundings and accounts haven't changed at all. V P I is fully enrolled. Head Start's not fully enrolled yet. All applications pending are over income, and that's something that we're looking to address, trying to figure out how we can meet the needs of the community while also making sure that we follow the federal guidelines. All the classrooms have iPads, and they started using a program called Passion Night. There's, I mean, the research base, and it's basically kids playing games that match their skill, skill level. They have a lot of scaffolding, so it makes learning more enjoyable. They don't realize that they're learning. October twenty-seventh was reading night. There had, at that point, forty-plus children signed up. They had stations of writing activities, snacks, and each family got to take a book home. There were some fall activities planned. And there was a challenge for Horizon Community Partners to have, to read fifty books before the end of the school year. They log themselves, and then they're going to give current records to be able to add to their home library. So that begins by late fifth. So a lot of really good things going on at Head Start, and we're really looking forward to having new members. Like I said, November twenty-first is our next meeting.
Thank you very much. So let's see, I think that's taken care of our business. We can have more discussions or questions.
Pursuant to two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of Division Employees Authorized by Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A one, Code of Virginia, for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and return of employees; and Discussion of People and Personnel Authorized by Section two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven A two, for early admission, labor and security tenants out of the county, out of district, or plus students.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Close session. It's nice to see you get the, you know, the back.